We'll go ahead and call our Joplin Schools Board of Education November meeting to order. Roll call, Mrs. Worsler.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Reports, celebrations. All our celebrations up here this evening? We'll start with the Kiwanis Club of Joplin Teacher of the Month Hannah Horn. Hannah teaches 4th grade at Cecil Floyd and was honored for her outstanding efforts to improve student outcomes, model lifelong lessons, and support her Joplin Schools colleagues. She was nominated after a recent choice to go the extra mile to help students understand the importance in making good choices while on the school bus, overseeing changed behaviors to encourage safe, respectful rides. Thank you to the Kiwanis Club members for recognizing Ms. Horn as the excellent Eagle that she is. Congratulations. Joplin High School Orchestra, what a great showing by the Joplin High School Orchestra students. They made up nearly half of the Western Missouri All-Region Orchestra earlier this month. All eight JHS students attended the day-long seminar on Friday to prepare for their evening performance at Drew University in Springfield, led by Drew Orchestra Director Andy Johnston. Many thanks to the WMARO and JHS Orchestra Director Kylie Van Horn for giving our students this opportunity. Congratulations to our Eagles on an outstanding performance. Thank you Yeoman Race Engines. For the past few Fridays, Yeoman Race Engines have brought their custom 1965 Ford Mustang and two dirt track modified race cars to North Middle School to get these students revved up for a great school attendance. Their team has passed out race bracelets, race ducks, and high fives all around, and even generously allowed students to take the driver's seat before racing into class. Thank you so much for partnering with North Middle School. Teacher Proud Tuesday, congratulations to Joplin Early Childhood Cindy Hillsabek. Cindy teaches preschool and early childhood and was nominated by more than one parent with great things to say about her efforts. Here's a sample of their comments. "With Cindy's care and support, my daughter thrived and was very confident about kindergarten." Another parent said, "She created a beautiful relationship with my child, loving her as though she were her own. I cannot express enough how much I appreciate all she has done. She has been supportive, kind, loving, and exceptional educator." Congratulations to Cindy Hillsabek. Veterans Day celebrations. Students and staff celebrated Veterans Day all over the district earlier last week with music, poetry, speeches, photos, artwork, and classroom visits by some of their favorite veterans. We are very grateful to all of our veterans for their service and honored we were able to have some of them attend our buildings in various school celebrations. There's some excellent things happening in Joplin Schools right now, and we're so happy to be a part of those. Our Student Advisor Report, Ms. Rutledge.
Joplin Schools history was made when the JHS Girls Cross Country Team qualified for state. Never in Joplin Schools' history has an entire team, girls or boys, accomplished this. The girls on the team were Ariana Liley, Ava Dahl, Ally Madras, Iliana Luhin, and Kyrie Britton, Elijah Madison, and Michaela Carter. Ava Dahl also broke her own school record, first at districts and again at state. On the boys' side, three athletes also qualified, Chance Tindall, Gray Edwards, and Noah Fisher. Congratulations to all athletes for their hard work and dedication. Our Joplin High School JROTC Eagle Battalion was awarded the Best Marching Unit in the Joplin Veterans Day Parade. They received a trophy from the American Legion Post-13 Vice Commander, and we are incredibly proud also of the work our cadets have invested towards this and so many other accomplishments this fall.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garrett, celebrations with Cecil Floyd.
Good evening. We are excited to host this month's board meeting, and I first want to recognize my Assistant Principal, Vicky Gilbert. She's in the audience, along with our staff. So representing Cecil Floyd tonight, we have anywhere from teachers to special education parents. So we appreciate them coming tonight and helping celebrate. It's always a good time to celebrate what our staff and students are doing. We'll start with our mission statements. Our leadership team last year created this mission statement for us to kind of live by here and have in our daily conversations. It says, "Our Cecil Floyd family grows confident in successful learners where every person matters." And we're excited about this. We've spent a lot of time and research and just where we want to be, where we want to go with our vision and kind of our culture here at Cecil Floyd, so we're excited to kind of see that through. Also, our leadership team decided we would like our students to be a part of this trend. And so we, our staff created I Am Statements. These are affirmations that our students say every morning with their class, and it says, "As a Cecil Floyd student, I am here, I am loved, I am safe, I am smart, and I am important." We feel like these, we value these here at Cecil Floyd, and we want our students to know to do that as well. So we're excited about those two components that our leadership team created last year. All right, academic success for Cecil Floyd, kindergarten and first grade, based off of our spring data from last school year. I put on there that they crushed their BCP goals in reading fluency. The goal was 75%, and they went well above that with 79 and 80. That's really hard to do, so we're excited about that proficiency for kindergarten and first grade. That's where they ended last spring. Same goes for NWA scores last spring, second grade reading. So I like to throw this in there as well, not just proficiency, but when you move students out of the red or out of at-risk into the next band or next component, I think that's a win, as long as we're moving kids that way. And so in the fall, we had students in the red in second grade or at-risk at 39%. And in the spring, they bumped it just to 23. So I thought that was a great improvement, should be recognized for their efforts that way. Third grade, NWA fall proficiency on the map improved by 8%. And I feel like that is a huge number to go up like that. And so super excited about third grade and what they're doing with their students. Can't wait to see what this year's results as well. Fourth grade grew as well in reading on their math scores. And they also, according to our BCP goal for reading, they crushed it as well. We always do well in science for 5th grade. Fall proficiency, 50% to spring, what, 63? So had a big jump in that, so excited to celebrate our 5th grade science, especially as they move to 6th grade. And so that's good to look at. We have some scores for the fall. So this slide shows data from our Eagle time. Eagle time is an RTI time that we set aside during the day that is focused on missing skills. So for example, 1st grade is on the board right there that you see. 1st grade works with our students for about 50 minutes during RTI time. And each teacher, and each reading teacher, they have different groups based off of what skill they're missing. And so you can see there's a pre-test and a post-test. And this is our, it's the PSI data, you know, phonics and reading, sounding out letters, things like that. You can just tell that at the beginning, the pre-test, we had some lower numbers, and we, on the right-hand side, we jumped up there. So exciting news there, just means they're ready to start reading, identifying those words. Same goes for 3rd grade. 3rd grade fluency. Our pre-test scores show there on the left-hand side, and then our post-test is there on the right. And as you can see, we have some scores there have doubled. And so looking forward to what the next cycle holds for our 3rd grade and moving forward on that. So a lot of growth that we celebrate throughout the first semester already, so excited about that. Also want to move into attendance. We don't want to forget attendance because that's a main point. That is a main point in our BCP. Our building goal is to improve student attendance every day. And as you can see on the left-hand side there for Cecil Floyd, moving over to the right, we have three data points. Let's see, in May of 2023 to now, October of 2024, we've improved on all three components. You have proportional attendance, you have ADA, and you have 90/90. All three of those went up for us over those three checkpoints. And so students incentivized, you know, with attendance. We do monthly check-ins, we do monthly prizes, we do random drawings. We have teachers, we go announce over the intercom, can you send a student down who's here today? And they come down and get a prize. Or can you send a student who's here today that's number 11 on your roster? So number 11 students, they come down and, just any chance to recognize attendance and how important it is with our students. But that's, that's a celebration. Also, our 5th grade students have introduced Anatomy Academy. And what happens here is our local KC med students come over every Monday for an hour, and they're working with our 5th grade students. You can see in the pictures, it's very hands-on, self-engaging. Some medical aspects of that, and they love it. Anytime you can get kids, you know, working with hearts and just, you know, having fun doing that and loving science and getting interested in that is a game changer for us. That's been a really good time every Monday morning. And we love partnering with our local medical school, by the way. And so that's been a really good piece this year. Of course, we want to recognize Hannah again, you mentioned earlier. She was the Kiwanis Club Teacher of the Month for her efforts. So we want to make sure we give that a shout-out. But we do have many, many other staff members that go above and beyond. And so she was one that was well-deserved and recognized, but we also have some other staff to do that as well. Now, Veterans Day was mentioned earlier. We held a Veterans Day assembly with our 4th grade. So 4th grade sang several songs in front of our 4th grade parents and our local veterans. We had several in attendance that day, it went really well. Ms. Shirley, our music teacher, does a great job organizing that and working with our students, so that was a hit. Also, November is National Substitute Month. And just like our staff here at Cecil Floyd, same goes for substitutes. We cannot do this without them. And so we try to show appreciation for our substitutes whenever we get a chance. So our PTA provided gift bags for the month of November. Any sub, our substitute that came in the month of November received a gift bag and a Cecil Floyd t-shirt. So that's what you see there.
Thank you so much, and like I, I'll share this again when I share at a dinner. It's so good to be with everybody here this evening, and we just took a tour of the building and were able to see really what's happening and what excites you. And I love to see what you have shared about attendance and the building. And just thank you so much for letting us be a small part and partnering with you on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Superintendent Data report, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and Cecil Floyd staff as well, really appreciate you. Shelley Toft, want to talk about the audit.
Tonight we have Mandy Koolen from Westbrook &amp; Company who will bring us information on our last year's audit. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mandy.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mandy Koolen, and I'm a partner with Westbrook &amp; Company. I know it says Tommy somewhere on my screen, but that's my administrator that sets this up. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me join your meeting tonight to take a few minutes of your time to go through some highlights of the audit report. I'm going to share my screen, and just feel free to follow along. And then I would be glad to answer any questions you guys might have. Starting out is our audit opinion. Here is where we state that the financial statements were presented fairly. We didn't have to make any audit adjustments when we came in to audit the financials, so this is an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. This is the district's statement of activities as of June 30th of 2024. So what this shows us, to the far left, you'll see expenditures broken down by function for total expenditures of about $144 million. To the right of those expenditures are going to be any program revenues that came into offset those expenditures. So any charges for services or operating for programs that came into offset the cost of each of those functions. Now, to the far right, you'll see a net cost for, a net expense for each of those governmental functions. Just know that then those net costs are covered by the organization's general revenue. Sorry, you guys, I'm having some, oh, so if it sounds bad on you, I apologize. Everything I said is going back here. I'm going to try to reset my mind for a second.
Do it again.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, you can't, okay, perfect, so I just feel like that, sorry about that. Okay. So this is the district's statement of activity, as I mentioned. This shows us the net cost of each program. Just know that then these costs that are reflected to the far right on this slide are uncovered by the organization's general revenue. So that's going to be your basic formula, corporate tax, sales tax, those other revenues which are often mentioned on this slide. Now, we read off to the two areas of food service and community services because those have been the two areas where we see that a district could break even. It doesn't always happen, but those would be the areas that we would be more likely to see that. This is the district's balance sheet as of June 30th of 2024. So we can see cash balances broken down by fund. You'll see that there was about $1.6 million in fuel liabilities as of the year-end. And then we can see fund balances broken down by restricted accounts, anything that was committed or assigned. And we can find some detail about this in the district's footnotes. What this shows us is that for the general fund, there was about $928,000 of that balance that was restricted for scholarships. Down below that, you can see that there were some funds that were assigned for food service and for student activities. And then that left about $55.2 million that was unassigned to be able to be used to cover the district's general operating expenditures. Now, the balance of the debt service fund of about $6.7 million, that's going to be utilized to be restricted for future debt payments. And then in the capital projects fund, we had about $793,000 that was committed as of June 30th of 2024, meaning that there was a project that had been completely taken or had been completed until after the year-end. But those funds were committed for those projects. And then anything left in the capital projects fund is going to be assigned for future capital outlay. This is the district's statement of revenue, expenditure, and change in fund balance. The top part of this, we can see revenues broken down by source, being by fund. Our total revenues, if we look all the way over to the far right, of about $119.4 million. Below that, we can see expenditures broken down by fund and by function for total expenditures of about $114.4 million. Now, the third line from the bottom here, we've actually read the district's net change in fund balance. And so if we look across the board, fund balances increased in each fund for a total of about $15 million for June 30th of 2024. This is an excerpt from the financial statements. In the notes of the financial statements, we can see information about the district's bonds. We can see things that were made in the audit here, as well as the ending balance, amounts due in the next year, and then future organization schedules of these bonds. You can also find detail, including the dates of interest rates of the outstanding bonds. And then we have a couple of slides just to show some historical information of the district. This first slide shows us revenues by source. And so this breaks down all the district's total revenues for the year. What percentage of that was local versus county, state, and federal? And you can see historical information for the previous five years. Now, if we look at this for the year ended June 30th of 2024, we'll see that local revenues increased slightly, where federal increased, and county, state, and other remains the same as a percentage of total revenues. Then we show similar information for expenditures. The 2024 expenditure totals are in the middle of this slide, and then you can see a comparative of the prior four years. The graphs here show us our total expenditures. What was the breakdown of salaries and benefits versus purchase services or supply and capital outlet? All of the benefits, of course, the finished chunk of that usually between 75% to 80% for a district. And then we have a couple of trends. The top part of this slide shows us district's reserves. And so we can see for a five-year term, districts' reserves have taken up the past few years. For June 30th of 2024, reserves were at 63.82%. And then the bottom part of this slide shows us average daily attendance. Average daily attendance was 7,045.89. You'll see that that increased about 93% from the prior year. During our audit, we looked at compliance with state statutes, specifically over attendance, transportation, budget, and purchasing. And in our audit, we didn't report any material instances of non-compliance over any of those years. And then you'll find in the audit our report on internal controls. If you review our report on internal control, you'll see that we don't provide an opinion on internal controls. However, we took a look at controls that are in place to help us design our audit procedures. We didn't report any deficiencies in internal controls. So you'll see as you review our report, it could be that they exist, but we're not identified during the audit. But there were no internal control deficiencies that were reported over the financial statements or over federal programs. The district audited food service and the education stabilization fund as the organization's as the district's major programs. And there were no internal control deficiencies that were reported or instances of non-compliance that were reported over those major federal programs. Now, this slide shows us a summary of our results. And this is just a recap of the information that we just talked about. The top part of this shows that the district had an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. There were no deficiencies that were reported with internal controls over the financial statements or over the federal awards, and no issues with non-compliance over the federal programs that were reported. Now, I want to point out on the bottom of this slide, you'll see where it says, "Does the auditing qualify our lower risk audit?" And that's marked to know. What that means is the district reports its financial statements on a cash basis, which is very common in a service school district. And the uniform guidance over federal programs says that if an organization is cash basis, what that means is more of your federal expenditures have to be counted. So from an audit standpoint, we have to audit 40% of your federal expenditures, and it's because the organization is cash basis, which is why that question has to be marked to know. But I always like to point that out because if you look at it, you're like, oh, why are we not progress? It's nothing to be wrong with that, it's just from an audit standpoint, more work has to be done over federal programs. And then you'll have a separate report, this will require a communication letter. Here is where we report that we didn't have any disagreements with management. We didn't have any journal entries that were required to be made during the audit. And then we just report any other general recommendations or best practices, anything we saw throughout the audit. When we were looking at federal programs, we just had one recommendation. We found that over the programs that are listed on this slide, some of them were, they had cast their performance period. So a district has so long to spend funds that have been obligated over federal programs. And on a couple of these programs, the performance period had cast, but I knew that there weren't expenditures that could be utilized after these programs anyways. But under title, the district has 27 months to spend these funds that have been obligated. And so during our audit, we worked with the district to help them reclass expenditures to the title programs, which allows the district to keep approximately $187,000 of these funds to be used for title funding. We would just recommend a recommendation of performance and a reconciliation of the general ledger to the budgeted reports in EPEX and the DESU system, just to make sure that those are reconciled and also to pay attention to the performance periods so that we can make sure that the district is utilizing all of the federal funds possible and doesn't miss out on any of those funds. But that was our three recommendations that we had throughout the audit. Do you all have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions on the audit?
This is not a question, but I would just like to say congratulations and thank you for doing such a great job. Again, a very clean audit is an accomplishment, so great job.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you guys so much. And I just wanted to thank Shelley, Sarah, and the whole team there. It's always a smooth audit process, and so we really appreciate that. Enjoy working with you guys.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay, thank you guys, you all helped me, and I'm sorry for the technical difficulties.
It's all right. Thank you. And again echo Shelley Toft and your team, as well as Jordan and their help and everybody involved. So thank you very much again, excellent work. Okay, our next topic is Data Committee Report. Dr. Wongi and Ms. Sherrick.
Yes, and I think Veronica's going to share some insight.
Yes. So, sorry, I'm pulling something out of my pocket. The Data Committee met last week, I believe it was on Wednesday. Had a lot of good information about lots of different areas, including a lot of our demographics. our demographics. One thing that stood out to me, uh, we actually have, um, of the students, the seniors who took the ACT, um, this is a fun fact. We have, um, the top 10% of our students that took the ACT scored 30.5 on average. Um, the top 5% scored a 32.29, which is an increase from last year and I thought a very good statistic to share with the community. In addition, we have been doing a lot of great work, um, with our students. And there's a real focus on learning and not just teaching this year that is, um, being spread throughout the district at all levels. And the focus is resulting in some increased test scores and, and I think that is showing the increase in learning that we're looking for. Um, still have a lot of work to do, but we are seeing improvement. A couple of examples of these, kindergarten students have shown a 4% increase in phonemic awareness at the start of the year. First grade phonics scores increased by 7%. Uh, second and third grade overall composite scores are at 46 and 47% respectively. Let's see. We are, another fun fact, we are actually surveying students that speak 33 different languages in our district. And map testing, although the APR has not yet been released, last year's state testing data shows Joplin is nearing on-track status in ELA math and science with social studies already achieving that level. And we are confident in our potential to move from approaching to on-track in these areas. Did I miss anything?
No, I would say one of the huge celebrations, um, our principals really engaged in some deep conversations with our committee on some of those qualitative anecdotal things that are happening on a daily basis. And so it's been really exciting to listen to them talk about different, uh, in-the-moment learning. And I think from Mr. Garrett, you saw an example of that. Here's where we are, here are the cycles we're going through and what we're doing with kids in real time. That is definitely a shift for us this year. Not that we haven't been doing that, but it has been a heightened focus with, um, our work with knowing where students should be and how they're, how they're performing with that. So very exciting work happening. Hard work, but good work. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you both.
Uh, long-range facility report, Dr. Harding.
Uh, yes, we met, um, October 30th last. It was our 10th meeting. Um, after the conclusion of the meeting, we have been to every single building in Joplin Schools except for Joplin High School. Um, so they've had the ability to see every building we have in the district except for Joplin High School. Um, in the, as I reported in the October, uh, board meeting, we had a discussion, uh, the, the previous meeting that, uh, the, the committee kind of boiled down to three aspects that they wanted to focus on, and that was educational suitability, um, special education suitability, especially for intensive programs, and, uh, pre-K expansion. So those are the three priorities that they, um, really wanted to focus on. And that can, that can encompass a very big piece. And so what we did on October 30th is we asked Dr. Weaver, uh, to come in and facilitate the meeting for, from an adaptive school standpoint, to get the, uh, to get the cohort together to kind of pinpoint what are the specific things that they are really looking at, uh, when they're looking at those three aspects. And I think we've kind of come to some places, and so we are gonna have another meeting on December 10th to kind of fine tune that as well. Um, and hopefully start coming up with some recommendations as we move forward to our May report.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you. A lot of hard work by that committee over several months. Uh, and now, Ms. Toft, financial statements and health and dental plan update, please.
Yes. Um, on the financial statements, uh, the first four months of the year, we had revenue up about 1.3 million compared to, uh, last year at the same time. And expenses were up about 428,000. But overall, um, our percentages are pretty, pretty similar to the prior year. Few differences of those are Prop C sales taxes up a little bit, interest income was up about 430,000. Beacon collections, I've talked about in the past, was up to 490,000. But any questions on the financial statements?
What are Prop C sales taxes?
Prop C is the, uh, it's the state sales tax that's collected, and we get a portion of that based off of ADA. On the health and dental fund, um, we're a third of the way through the year, but we've spent a little over 3 million so far, which is about 37.2% of our budget. Uh, we're still running ahead of last year by about 311,000. You'll notice, though, that this month our, um, expenditures in the medical appeared to be down. Uh, they were only 400 and, almost 454,000. We did not receive any billings from Anthem during the month of October. I will just say that we, those are starting to come in now and they, um, so we will see an increase in November because some of October's expenses did hit in November because, uh, it took them a while to get their billing, uh, cycle set up. Any questions on the health and dental report?
Hearing none, thank you. Public comments, Ms. Worsler? Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Schroder to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda, accounts payable, Ms. Toft.
Okay, our bill list for tonight is 7,740,021.33 compared to a year ago of 7.5 million, so very similar. Uh, the month of October, since we are meeting, um, a little early, it is, we only have one bill cycle, um, on this, um, on the accounts payable report. Any questions?
I move for approval of the accounts payable.
One second. We have a motion by Mrs. Sherrod, a second by Mr. Robertson to approve the accounts payables presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. The approval of the 2023-2024 audit report.
I move that we approve the audit report.
Second.
As presented. We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Sherrod to approve the 2023-2024 audit report as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. The Joplin School Board April 8th, 2025 election, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, uh, we have a resolution that we read annually and a school board election announcement, so please bear with me. Notice is hereby given to the qualified voters of the school district of Joplin Schools, Jasper and Newton Counties in Missouri, that the annual election of said district will be held Tuesday, the 8th day of April 2025, beginning at 6 o'clock AM and closing at 7 o'clock PM of said day to vote upon the following proposition. To choose two directors who shall serve as members of the Board of Education of Joplin Schools for a term of three years each. Be it resolved that the Secretary of the Board of Education is hereby authorized and directed to notify in writing the clerk of the, uh, County Court of Jasper County, Missouri, and the clerk of the County of Newton County, Missouri, of the adoption of the notice of election no later than 4:30 PM on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and to include said notification all of the terms and provisions required by law. Also, school board election to our community. Joplin Schools encourages qualified applicants interested in running for a position on the school board to file to be a candidate in the April 8th, 2025 election. Interested people may file at the Joplin Schools Administration Building at 825 South Pearl Avenue, Joplin, Missouri. Filing will begin on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 at 8:00 AM and will continue during the district's regular business hours, which are Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Except for the first and last dates, candidate filing will not occur on days that school district's offices are closed due to inclement weather. Filing will also not occur on the following dates when the school district's offices are closed, Monday, December 23rd, 2024 through December 30th, 2024. Candidate filing will resume at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, December 31st, 2024, and close at 5:00 PM Tuesday, December 31st, 2024, the last day for candidate filing. Names of qualified candidates will be placed on the ballot in order of filing, except candidates filing on the first day. The district will determine by random drawing the order in which the names of the first day candidates will appear on the ballot. There are two board positions available with a three-year term. For more information, contact Cheryl Worsler at 417-625-5200, extension 2020, or cherylworsler@joplinschools.org. Uh, Board of Education Administration recommends that the board approve the attached resolution calling for the April 8th, 2025 election and approve the date of December 10th, 2024 as the first date of filing and December 31st, 2024 as the last date of filing for the school board candidate election as required by law.
I entertain a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I move that we approve the, uh, the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroder, a second by Mr. Greenlee to approve the April 8th, 2025, school board election resolution as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Joplin Schools legislative priorities, Dr. Seketa.
Recently at our work session, we introduced, uh, legislative priorities positioned for the Joplin School Board for the 2025 General Assembly Session and the rest of the school year. Um, there's a lot of work that's been put into these, uh, priorities, uh, a lot of reference material coming from the Southwest Center, uh, namely, uh, Missouri's Association of School Administrators, Missouri School Boards Association, and, um, also, uh, DESI Strategic Plan was also consulted. Uh, these, uh, priorities encompass, uh, priority funding for schools when it comes to recruitment and retention of teachers, prioritizing public funding for education, and also, uh, tax revenue considerations and protecting funding for school districts, property assessments, safety and mental health for students performing, uh, or, excuse me, reforming assessment and accountability systems that we have here in the state of Missouri, uh, protection of the retirement system, and also economic development and bonding for school districts. Um, I really appreciate the work and the time that's been put in this by a number of people and the consideration of the Board of Education. I think we're in a very difficult time, and I think it's a, a statement that our board, uh, wants to stake out positions that we are for and make sure that we protect, uh, district, the district and our students and our staff. And this, this is very important for us to move forward so that we can, uh, engage with our legislators and make sure that they understand how Joplin feels about, uh, education in the state of Missouri.
Thank you. I would add as well that, uh, through my involvement with Missouri School Boards Association, I have really learned that, uh, there's no greater advocates for local public control and education than the people that sit in this room and the people that we're lucky enough to serve. And there's really not a lot of people advocating on behalf of public education in Jefferson City and walking the halls of our state capitol. And I think that it's important that as a board that we adopt and approve these items, saying that this is exactly who we are, this is what we believe in, and this is where we're going. Because we do know that advocates for public schools are critical during this time, especially as we've seen unprecedented assault on public education. So we are so, I, I'm very happy that we have started doing this. Last year was our first year, we adopted legislative priorities and glad that we're doing it for a second year.
Very good.
I move that we approve the legislative priorities 2024 as presented by Dr. Seketa.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroder, a second by Mr. Greenlee to approve the legislative priorities as presented. Mr. Robertson.
And I, I like how we're starting to do this as well because it's helping push the agenda, but we don't have to exactly agree with everything on the agenda to approve it. Like, I don't agree completely with the expansion of early childhood education, but I still have a majority of things on that list that we, we do support wholeheartedly as a committee.
Yeah, I would al- always add that I think that it is important that as a, as a group that we have a collective agreement on things. And, and I appreciate your willingness to share, uh, your, your difference of opinion, but also, uh, all in support of this tonight and your vote. So thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Greenlee, a second by Mr. Robertson to adjourn our meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you Cecil Floyd staff.